Okay, we'll open the meeting tonight. Flag salute. Okay, thank you all for taking time on your busy schedules to come here tonight. We'll start with the roll call.
This is Hoover, here. This is Dr. Cruz.
Here.
This is Cruz, here. Mr. Crummanocker?
Here.
This is Crummanocker, here. Mrs. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Shell? Mr. Basil?
Here.
Ms. Incha?
Here.
Okay, has anybody signed up to speak?
Yes.
Okay, we have to keep it to five minutes and stay on topic if you can. So, Mr. Jim Rock.
Well, I have to come embarrassed.
Until we can hear you, since we're open now.
Hi. When I start talking, you're gonna think I'm nuts, but there's a point to it. So, I go to church at St. Mary's. I was trying to figure out how to say this without being hard. And there's a spot in mass where the deacon comes around the front, he looks back at the priest, and he says, "The doors, the doors, let us be attentive." And I thought, wow, even the Greek church has trouble with doors forgetting. So, it begged the question, how can we bid this goal without doors? Like, how could that have happened? How could we have spent all this time and all these times? How many times we asked Hank about soft costs? Doors never came up. And I think it's kind of a hypothetical question, because I think we all know the answer. Those things got missed because, at least my opinion, which could be wrong, because the whole thing was kind of in a hurry. We were in a hurry to bid it, we're in a hurry to get the thing voted on. I don't know if we properly reviewed the bids. I still don't know if we did, and I'm hoping that nothing else, like a quarter million dollars worth of doors, got left out of the bidding. Okay, I might be wrong about the figure, but it's close. And so, my point is, we kind of rushed through that, and it didn't work out so good. And it seems to me that we're kind of going to repeat the same mistake here. Dr. Pasonic's contract, which I don't think is up until next year, if I'm not mistaken, is up for to be renewed, or whatever you want to call it. And it seems to me that, and it's very clear to me, that she has hitched her wagon to this renovation as her, you know, way to remake the entire school district. And that's fine. But if she is going to take that as her I concept that she's gonna take and run with, then I think, in order to be fair to the district, we need to see how she manages it. Like, I don't blame her for the doors. That's something that could be missed. But I am concerned that if this project goes forward, and there's other big mistakes. I mean, I know you can blame it on anybody. You can blame it on the contractors, you can blame it on Mr. Pranish. And I know he took responsibility for the doors, which was very upstanding of him. But bottom line is superintendent, she pushed it. She did everything she could to get it through, and that's fine. But now it's her baby. And I think before we renew her contract, we should see how the project proceeds. Because she's essentially running the district now, and so she's running the project. I'm concerned that we will re-up her contract, and then we'll find out that maybe that wasn't the best idea. Next, whenever the school opens, in my mind, I'm thinking, what's gonna happen when the school opens? Well, in my mind, it's gonna be chaos. Like, not that it's always gonna be that, but when the school first opens, you're gonna have kids everywhere you don't. I mean, you're gonna need a real logistics expert. I don't, not, nothing against doctored curriculum, but that's not gonna help you when that school opens. You're gonna have to be a master scheduler, and you're gonna have to really take care of logistics. Who's where, when they're supposed to be, and why? And bottom line, when those kids are all here for the first couple weeks, months, year, and they're running all over the place, it's only gonna be one thing keeping high school kids from the elementary kids. You know what that is? The doors. And we better make darn sure whoever we put in charge of that, make sure the doors that are supposed to be closed and locked are when they need to be. I just don't know why we would be in a rush to re-up the superintendent when we're in the middle of the project that she wanted to do, which is fine. I think we should see how she manages it before we re-up her again. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Okay, that's all there is. So, we'll move to student recognition.
Table that till July.
Okay. Administrative report, superintendent's report.
My report I'll complete in executive session tonight. I need to review some safety information and data with the board.
Mr. Pranish, do you want to speak now? For the report?
The only thing I'm gonna go over is the treasurer's report. So, getting cash balance was three hundred. I'm just gonna use raw numbers. Three hundred twenty-nine thousand at April thirtieth. Our local revenues were a hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Our state revenues were three million, three hundred and forty-seven thousand. And other miscellaneous revenues, transfers were six hundred and sixty-three thousand. For a total made receipts of four million, one hundred and forty-nine thousand, which would bring our available funds for the, for use in the month of May of four million, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand. We spent one million, two hundred and ninety-one thousand in disbursements and payroll, which leaves us our ending cash balance of three million, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand as of May thirty-first. The other accounts are athletic. One of the things I just wanted the board to check, to look at, at these the treasurer's report is, let's show the negative number there. That's not what the bank statement itself showed. That shows, in particular, for May, that was a Friday. So, I generally do not transfer funds if we write checks out on the last of the month. We send those out, but I know they're not gonna hit until the following Monday. If we can gain a couple of days of interest on our money, I don't do our transfer until the beginning of the week. So, in any case, those were not overdrawn accounts. Those were just book balances showing the athletic account of negative four dollars and seventy-one cents, high school activities of forty thousand dollars, elementary activities of eleven thousand, nine hundred, cafeteria account of negative one thousand, capital reserve account is ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred, and the money market in capital reserve is five thousand, one hundred dollars. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
I think I gave you guys the blanket report.
Yeah. We gotta email it.
Yeah.
Okay, the minute approval. Be resolved, the minutes of the May seventh, two thousand twenty-four committee, the whole meeting, and May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting are approved as presented. And I will make that motion.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Norma Krug. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
And the treasurer report, you just heard from Mr. Pranish. So, be resolved, the treasure and financial reports for May two thousand twenty-four be approved or presented or amended, received, and filed. First by Mrs. Norma Crummanocker. Second by Mrs. Norma Krug. Any questions or comments on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
Okay, do we need an executive session right now? I think we probably do, because there's some items that we'll probably need to vote on.
Say yes.
Okay. So, be resolved, the Board of Education moves to executive session and discuss, to discuss students' contracts, personnel, and/or legal matters at six oh nine PM. I'll make that motion. So, this is Carol Lee. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't know how long it's gonna take, depending on the number of items we need to speak on, so. All right, be resolved, the Board of Education resumes the June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting at six thirty-seven PM, and I'll make that motion. Take on Mr. Mike Basil. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the enrollment report. Biggest thing about this, guys, is, is as stated on our agenda here, we are down twenty-four students this day compared to last year at the same time, eight hundred and eight to eight thirty-two. But our special ed numbers are up to one eighty-three versus one sixty-eight of last year. So, we'll go into the action agenda and building grounds in cafeteria.
Wait, can I ask a question before we do that?
Sure.
When do we have this year's kindergarten numbers?
This year's kindergarten numbers, we probably have the majority of them now.
Okay.
But we're might get a few more for the start of school.
Okay.
BK stayed steady, and kindergarten increased. So, it's not all bad.
Yeah, they're sexy.
But I just wanted kindergarten numbers up.
Thank you.
Building grounds cafeteria.
Item A, building project update. Discuss any updates on the building project and architect's report. Hank, I said this about the discussion of the water line, the weight room changes, cafeteria revision, and retrofitting discussion. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
It's you online.
Hank, can you hear us? Hi, Hank.
Hi.
Right, there you are. Okay, do you want to talk about the water line, weight room changes, cafeteria layout revisions? And then we talk a little bit about the retrofitting of the basketball hoops.
Okay, so, I guess, and Nick, please jump in, because you're in the room, so it might be easier for you. But if we start with the water line, the, the water company is saying that they want to have your existing fire hydrants metered and your new, your new water line for your, for your for the sprinklers metered. And they're saying that the there's a new regulation that they have that requires this meter to be outside in a pit, not inside the building. So, they, they want to put a small pit out by the main road and put a meter in it and take the meter out of the interior of your building. So, you'll get that space back where that meter is in your building. But they want the contractors to install a concrete meter pit and a meter out there.
We do not, we have to figure out what the water authority wants first. Now that Hank and his consultants have found out what they want, they're gonna have to know the specifications of that. And then we can get a person.
Is this requirement? Like, there's no way around it.
Can, can we ask when this requirement took effect?
I can find that out for you. What, what my engineers told me is it's brand new. I don't know if brand new means a week, a month, or six months, but I will find that out for you.
So, they're gonna provide the specifications and the drawings? Hank?
Yes, yes. The civil engineer is working on those right now. And then we give those to the contractors, and, and they will price it.
Water authority wants to widen their problem.
I think it's similar to the, to the same thing that happened with the electric service. They, they, it's, it's what they require, but they require their, their customers to pay for the work.
Why, why is it coming up now, and not prior?
Because I believe it's, it's, it's new. It's, it's a new requirement. And you were grandfathered in with your old meter, but they're trying to say you're not meeting their current standards because the fire hydrants on your campus are not metered. So, if somebody were to use a fire hydrant, they wouldn't know how much to charge anybody. And so, they're, that, that's what they're saying. That this new requirement requires all of the services on the site to be metered, and it requires them all to be metered outside of the building instead of inside of the building.
Hank, I want you to go to them and find out when this requirement came into being.
Absolutely, I will check on that.
Okay. Okay, Hank, you want to talk about the weight room?
Okay, I'm with the rate weight room. There's been a, a request by the, the staff. In the plans, we had the areas back by the, the, the rear gymnasium. There are three rooms back there. One is the existing weight room, and the other two were storage rooms. We were taking the wall down between the two storage rooms and building what was called a fitness center or an aerobic center for an additional phys ed space. What the what the staff has determined is they would, they think that space would be better utilized if we made it one large space instead of two spaces and made it just one large weight room so that it would work well for all of athletics and could still be used as a fitness space. So, right now, in the contract, we have one wall coming down, creating two spaces. What has been requested is to remove two walls to create one space.
Do we have a cost on that?
Well, I know SiteLogic has requested costs from the contractors. Nick, have you received those yet?
I've received some, but not all, so we don't have numbers to present to you to make.
Hank, who requested it? Do you know?
I, I, I believe it started with the gentleman who runs the, the weight room for the football team. And then, and then other fitness, gym teachers and phys ed teachers got involved in that. I don't remember all their names. I don't know, Laura, if you, if you could shed any light on that.
It started with Sam Shooty. I had him look at the layout and what equipment we were bringing from the high school down to here. And he said, of course, we can make it work. It will be a tight squeeze. He said, what would be great is if we could have the whole area. My concern was not having storage for the back gym. So, when I talked with TJ, TJ said, no, that would be fine. We have enough storage elsewhere that he felt that there would be no problem. Again, the staff will do whatever, whatever they're provided with. So, if the board chooses not to do it, then it's not done. If the board wants to do it, then it'll be done.
So, Hank, you said there'd be three, there's three existing rooms. So, it'd be either three down two or three down the line, is what it's.
Correct, yes. Either two medium-sized rooms or one large room.
And with the two, it'll be two separate rooms. So, you can't see from one room to the other.
So, he'd want to have, if he has kids looking and using equipment, he would like to have his eyes on them.
Yes, the whole morning.
That makes sense. Hank, you want to talk about cafeteria?
Yes, that was a, that, that's a similar scenario where the, the drawings show one large storage room, and that large storage room was designed in the cafeteria in case the alternate was taken to convert the cafeteria to a multipurpose room. There needed to be a place to roll and move all of the tables out of the way if it was going to be a multipurpose room. Now that it's been determined that it's not going to be a multipurpose room, the, with, they looked, the staff looked at the best use for, for that storage space. And there is, you, you have some existing rolling storage shelves. They're the kind of shelves that you see in a, in a library a lot of times where, where they stack up against each other, and they, they, they only leave, you can roll them out to make space to get in between, in between two of them. And if you need to get to another one, you slide that one over, and you go down to the next one. It, it's very efficient space for storing things. The contract has the contractors removing those and either salvaging them and returning them over to the school or moving them, taking them off-site and getting rid of them. The, the idea is to take a portion of this storage room that is in the contract and relocate those shelving units to it to allow for a lot of document storage and, and other types of storage to happen in those shelves instead of just discarding those shelves. And then with that, they had requested maybe some, some drinking fountains and water bottle fillers that are inside the cafeteria and a hand washing station inside the cafeteria for the younger kids to use before they go back to, go back to class and before they start eating lunch when they show up for lunch. And so.
Station will come from the current tech ed room, and the water stations will come from out in the hallway. So, we're not.
Right, so, everything is relocated equipment that the contractor is currently owned, removing. So, we're, again, that's another one where SiteLogic has requested pricing, and I do not believe they have all the pricing in yet. So, we're here to, we're basically telling you that this is on the horizon, and it's not something that needs to be done. But it, but once the pricing is in, we feel that the board can make an informed decision on whether they want to move forward with it or not.
Is that it, Hank?
That's it, as far as I know. Nick, is there anything else?
No, just that said, once we have all the pricing, and I think we're gonna touch on it shortly, but now that we're in the summer months, working throughout the building, if we're going, the board does approve that, we need to act quickly on it to be able to get started on that work and complete it in a timely manner before students return.
I have a question. Either Hank or SiteLogic, do you foresee any change orders in our favor that will offset those costs?
Yeah, there's a handful of credits that are coming back. I mean, there's the divider curtain. The gym is no longer being installed or moving. The divider curtain was installed to the gym. So, there should be a credit for that. There's a handful of other credits that we have tracked on the, the change management law that the district will be getting some money back.
Okay, that would be helpful to see as far as figures, as far as to curb the spending.
Yeah, as soon as we have them, we'll put them on the law, provide them in the monthly report. So that everybody can see.
Thank you. All right, do you have any building updates?
I have no update, like, at Cal meetings, just if anybody has any questions.
Okay. Let's move on to item C, auction item. Be it resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the administration to organize a list of duplicate or unwanted items to be auctioned off rather than paying for storage for these items from the renovation consolidation project. Mr. Pranish.
We discussed that, you know, there are a few things right now. For instance, the retractable basketball hoops for the gym. That was discussed, and apparently they can't be used because of the wage work. They have to go to the office of wage. So, those wouldn't be able to be retrofitted. I just don't want to see our maintenance staff move those things around twenty times and then get rid of them. So, those larger items that we have, I think it would be a good idea to try to get at least that kind of stuff out of here. The sooner the better. I don't know about the listing of the high school regarding, or even down here regarding the.
That's okay.
It's okay.
So, finish. Finish. To, to see whether or not those items, as far as our shop equipment, need are gonna be used or if they are gonna go as well.
Okay, I need a motion now.
A motion.
Motion for Mrs. Norma Krug, second by Mrs. Carol Lee. Okay, questions or comments? My only question, or my only request is, could you give a list of those to Carol so that we could all get them?
Yeah, we don't, I don't have them yet. That's what
When, when it's finished.
We're gonna gather, yes.
Anybody, anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
If she carries. Item D, real estate appraisal. Discuss the appraisal proposal on the high school. Mr. Pranish.
I put in front of you the actual quote that she had given us. We only had one person that showed up at our get-together prior to requiring them to submit their proposals. I believe it's Ginger Jackbowski Appraisals from Johnstown. She came in and sat down with us and went over basically that there's five different scenarios there that the board can choose. They can choose any, any of those, any combination of those. They're priced separately. If they chose everything, it would be sixty-one hundred dollars. At this point, the board, I just wanted to have those presented to you so that you would see what pricing, and there will have to be some discussion as to what she is to be told as far as what her progress of work is to be, or what scope of work she should do. So, the board can either make a motion in the future to accept her proposals, and they would make a decision as to what part, if any of them, they would use, or we can just sit on it at this point.
My comment is, if you're all in favor of this, this is one. Put it on the agenda for next time for a vote. Is that okay with that?
Yes, yes.
Let's put that on for a vote for next time.
We can't retro.
To accept it.
We can't retroact it now.
Okay. That's what I was talking to.
Yeah, only because it's.
It's not time, but time is.
Are we just gonna have to do the whole thing, or the pieces of it?
I see.
There are like four or five options.
Yeah, sure. Yep. Right on.
Well, can we have it on as a motion, though, so that we can at least vote individually? I mean.
Yeah, we'll do a roll call.
Well, I don't even mean that. I mean, each portion of what we want to get appraised, because we still have made a good decision on what we, as a group, wanted to try.
Can you do it individualized, stand for each one?
Yeah, we're gonna have to.
Okay, then we'll do that. We'll put it on for, each, each item will be individually voted on. Okay? All right.
Item E, change order, cafeteria layout revision. Discuss bulletin number fourteen revising the cafeteria storage room layout and adding drinking fountains and a hand sink in accordance with attachment one.
We did, we talked about both of those change orders, and the purpose for the change order approval, again, was for, this is somewhat time-sensitive. Things are moving very quickly. If the board so chooses, they can authorize someone to go ahead and do that, or if they want to wait until July. How, how, or will that affect what's happening with the building?
If we wait until July, I would expect it to would likely not be done until, you know, first news to return in. That said, until they get approval on which way the board chooses to go, it will kind of impact how, you know, the demolition takes place and whatnot of what's done with her contracts. One way or the other, just would like to make a swift decision.
And you're right, we don't have final boss for this.
Yeah. But we're kind of strapped, because we can't make that choice.
So, this is another one checked, so. Okay.
Item G, change order approval. Be it resolved, the Board of Education authorizes blank to approve the above change orders as outlined in bulletin fourteen for the cafeteria and bulletin number fifteen, weight room expansion, only due to time constraints.
Hey, question, Mr. Mike Basil?
Hey, question for Mr. Macbasel. Okay, the vote fails for lack of a second. Okay, this is finance.
G A S B seventy-five valuation proposal. See it resolve, the Board of Education accepts proposal from Holly Consulting Group to provide G A S B seventy-five valuation services for the post-employment medical liability. The report will cover fiscal years ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. The cost for this service is three thousand six hundred dollars per year.
Question for Mrs. Mark Basil, third one, from an offer. Anybody have any thoughts of their comments on that? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed?
I should carry.
Report to exporting supply, but be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the purchase of standard amount of fee twenty-two L R ammunition for the rifle team in the amount of. Two thousand six hundred dollars.
Question for Mrs. Mark Criminocker. Second one, Mrs. Norman Krug. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed?
I should carries.
P F B A membership, be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the district annual membership with P S B A for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year for the, for the following. Standard membership, three thousand eight hundred forty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents, quality maintenance, one thousand sixty-five dollars.
Question for Mrs. Mark Criminocker. Second one, Mrs. Jen. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed?
Sapphire contract five year renewal will be resolved, the Board of Education approves the five year software renewal of the con. Of the contract of Sapphire for our student information system. Annual cost for the years two of twenty-four, twenty-five through twenty-eight, twenty-nine will be subscription fee. Twenty-six thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars per year and support service fee, one thousand eight hundred ninety dollars per year.
Question for Mrs. Mark Criminocker, second one, Mrs. Norman Krug, questions or comments?
I, I have a question. Roland, is that, is there a financial benefit to us doing this for five years?
Yes. They held the price.
That's what I was wondering, and they cannot.
It's a little bit higher in the first year, but they, they, they said that they were. Increases would be at least three percent a year. The first year, I can't remember, it was a little bit high, but then it stayed that way for the remaining four. So it definitely was the same.
This is a pretty steep cost, but I'm gonna guess as, as in relation to doing a new system, it's probably less.
That's the problem, trying to, you know, even if you could go out and find another system that was a couple of thousand dollars a year cheaper. Our entire staff, since they're trained in using this system for a number of different things. So I think the cost benefit would be there to try to find another company because it's very.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed?
I should carries.
Five-year Microsoft renewal through I U thirteen, be it resolved, the Board of Education approves a five-year agreement for Microsoft licensing through I U thirteen. The cost per year will be ten thousand four hundred sixteen dollars and seventy cents. I'll make that mention.
Question for Mrs. Mark Criminocker. Second one, Mr. Mike Basil. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed?
Gasoline and diesel fuel, be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts the gas and diesel fuel business for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as follows. Gasoline, six thousand plus, two dollars and thirty-eight cents. Three thousand to five thousand nine, nine hundred ninety-nine, two dollars and forty-four cents. Five hundred to two thousand nine hundred ninety-nine, two dollars sixty-seven cents. Diesel at six thousand plus gallons is two dollars and ninety-one cents. Three thousand to five thousand nine hundred ninety-nine gallons is two dollars and ninety-three cents. Five hundred to two thousand nine hundred ninety-nine is three dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Question, question for Mrs. Mark Criminocker. Second one, Mr. Mike Basil. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed?
Twenty-four, twenty-five max capture agreement for school-based access participation. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the participation with max capture for service admission required for compliance of Pennsylvania's School-Based Access Program, S B A P requirement. The cost per claim is twenty-nine cents for direct service and sixteen cents for transportation.
Question for Mrs. Mark Criminocker. Second one, Mr. Mike Basil. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed?
Twenty-four, twenty-five insurance renewals, be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the insurance package renewal. Quote from Evansburg Insurance for property, employee dishonesty, inland marine, general liability, law enforcement, legal, violent incident, business auto, equipment breakdown, umbrella. Internet liability educators, legal coverage and workers compensation coverage of seven one twenty-four, seven one twenty-five. Total cost of.
Can we put that number in there?
Yes. Grand total cost for the package plus the student accident, which he has listed secondly, is one hundred seventy-one thousand. Eighteen hundred and nineteen dollars.
A comparison to last year's coverage and available on the board.
Second one, Mrs. Carol Lee. Any questions or comments?
I just wanted to, you know, Buddy wanted us, wanted me to let you guys know that, you know, the majority of this increase is listed in. On the property coverage, last year it was sixty-three thousand dollars for the coverage of the property. Buildings themselves, this year it's seventy thousand. So there's a, you know, seven thousand dollar increase, a little more than that. Which is a lot of money, but based on what's happening in the insurance industry with the costs of replacement materials. For, for facility and, and dollar value of the buildings that we have. That key belt, as I do, was reasonable with, with what horrors worries I'm hearing out there about other rate increases.
So are we able to drop that cost by increasing our deductible? Like you can do with a homeowner's policy?
Yes. Yeah, and I believe our deductible now is five thousand, so it would be cheaper, but. If I'm not mistaken, talking with him a few years back, we were kind of at like a, a point where most districts choose to be. But of course, if we want to bump that up. Can do that.
When is this up?
July first.
July first. Let's, it's a large amount, let's go roll call now.
Mrs. Hoover, yeah. Doctor Krug.
Yes.
Mrs. Krug, yes. Mr. Criminocker.
Yes.
Mrs. Criminocker, yeah. Mrs. Lee, yes. Mr. Shells absent, Mr. Basil.
Yes.
Miss Zentch, yeah, motion carries.
Can I just ask if you would require on that, what that would be?
Yes.
Thanks.
And I think, I mean, yeah, I mean, we could, I, I believe, you know, I don't know if, if many term you could change that or. I, you know, I know what you're saying, but that.
We don't want to go without courage, but. Thanks.
Healthcare consortium twenty-four, twenty-five renewal, be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the renewal of healthcare benefits to the Admiral Harry Consortium for the twenty-four, twenty-five. School year, which reflects a seven percent increase, so I'll make that motion.
Question for Mrs. Mark Criminocker. Second one, Mr. Jen Zenshaw. Questions or comments?
The seven, seven percent increase was, you know, voted on by the consortium members. I voted no, I'm the only one that voted no. I, I didn't think we needed to go that high. I thought our. Fund balance in the consortium level was enough precarious for a while until we see what happens. But in any case, that's what went through, so we all have to go as a group. Our budget that I've placed for the board's approval does include that seven percent increase. To my, you know, my computations have included that, so we're covered financially at seven percent.
Any questions after I finish? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed?
Adoption of final twenty-four, twenty-five general fund budget, be it resolved, the Board of Education adopts the twenty-four, twenty-five general fund budget with an estimated beginning fund balance. On July first, twenty-four, of three million dollars. Total anticipated revenue, total anticipated revenues total twenty-one million, two hundred eighty-one thousand five hundred and four. Anticipated disbursement total twenty-one million, five hundred thirty-one thousand five hundred and four. With a difference of two hundred fifty thousand dollars coming in from the general fund unassigned fund balance. This will be an ending fund balance of two million, seven hundred fifty thousand in the general fund. The proposed budget for real estate tax rate is sixty million, which implies no real estate tax increase for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. Earned income tax rate of half of one percent on earnings and profit. Real estate transfer tax of half one percent of selling price. Five dollars each person for Act five eleven per capita tax and five dollars each person for section six seventy-nine per capita tax. I'll make that motion.
Question for Mrs. Mark Criminocker. Second one, Mr. Jen Zenshaw. Roll call.
Doctor Krug?
Yes.
Mrs. Krug, yes. Mr. Criminocker?
Yes.
Mrs. Criminocker, yeah. Mrs. Lee, yes. Mr. Basil? Uh, Miss Zentchuck, yes. Mrs. Hoover, no. Motion carries.
Adoption of final twenty-four, twenty-five capital projects budget. Be it resolved, the Board of Education will adopt the twenty-four, twenty-five capital project fund budget with an estimated beginning fund balance of July first, twenty-four. Of twenty-one million, one hundred thousand, six hundred eighty-eight dollars. Total anticipated interest earnings of eight hundred fifty-three thousand, six hundred sixty-seven dollars. And transfers from the general fund of eight hundred fifty thousand will make up the total received of one million, seven hundred three, seven hundred three thousand, six hundred sixty-seven. Anticipated disbursement based on late logistics drawdown schedule will be seventeen million, one hundred fifty-four thousand, eight hundred thirty. Which will result in an ending fund balance on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five of five million, six hundred forty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Question for Mrs. Mark Criminocker. Second one, Mr. Mike Basil. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Mrs. Crim, I'm sorry. Yes. Mr. Criminocker?
Yes.
Mrs. Criminocker, yeah. Mrs. Lee, yes. Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Miss Zentchuck, yes. Mrs. Hoover, yeah. Doctor Krug.
Yep.
Motion carries.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just one thing I wanted to add, we talked and there's a motion there for the Admiral, for the hospitalization. There's also documents or it's kind of like a, a double thing that's happening there. We voted to, you know, to increase the, the amount that each district's taking in for the hospital day coverage. But because we're a self-funded group, we also, we use Highmark to take care of all of our claims. So there is an agreement in there with Highmark to handle those claims. And there are costs associated with that, like fifty dollars per, per, per month, per. Group of person in there. Per member in the group. The other one is a, for the. The section one twenty-five, the flexible spending account. However, that one has what we think is a wrong number. That number is five dollars and some odd cents. They had promised that they're gonna hold that, so the consortium is fighting them for, for that. So when you go through those packs to sign, do not sign the one that's for the flexible spending account.
I'll make sure you, you're with me when I do it.
But I just wanted the board to realize that there is also an agreement with, we don't really sign an agreement with Highmark. To provide healthcare's coverage. We, we pay those bills ourselves through the consortium. But Highmark operates as our intermediary and handles all the claims.
Well, they also get the insurance compensation with that too, because if you're out of pocket, sometimes it's more than the Highmark thing, go through Highmark, right? Yeah, yeah, if you, you know, you get the rate.
When you're a self-funded group like we are, we, we put in the money and if a claim is ten thousand dollars, we pay ten thousand dollars. We have a, we have a stock loss coverage that if someone has a significant coverage. But the healthcare consortium, when you're self-insured. You pay all claims, the money.
But you don't get a break by going through Highmark, because they usually have a deal with.
Yeah, yeah, but what I'm saying is, is that as part of their. Plan, yes, but whatever that deal is, if, if the hospital charges the consortium ten thousand dollars for a service, that's what we pay. Now, the Blue Cross would negotiate with them because of that, but we still, that comes out of our pocket.
That's what I think. They, they negotiate costs, okay. Any else more? Okay, community relationships starting at this time, curriculum instruction.
Nothing at this time.
Legislation and policy development, item A, full-time employees, children, non-resident enrollees. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the request of Mrs. Chelsea Daisley for her son and daughter to be enrolled in the district for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. School year and according to policy two oh two, eligibility of non-resident students at the tuition rate of fifteen hundred dollars per household.
Okay, do we need an motion that she's in, I'm sorry?
Yeah, we're gonna talk about it, yeah. Okay, this is Norman Krug. Second one, Mr. Jen Zenshaw. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, do we need an motion that it's employees, children? I mean, it's at the top, but.
Says, that's, yeah, that's fine. He's an employee.
Yeah, I didn't know, but it's, when we voted back, yeah. Policy state employees, children.
Yeah.
That's my question too.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Okay, policies open for review, be it resolved, the Board of Education reviews and approves the following policies. Policy two twenty-two tobacco vaping products, policy two twenty-seven controlled substances paraphernalia, policy three twenty-three tobacco vaping products. Policy three fifty-one controlled substance abuse and policy seven oh seven use of school facilities, these are all kind of related. I think with the changes that they had, so. I'll make that motion. Second one, Mr. Jerry Criminocker. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed?
I should carries.
Okay, new policy for adoption. Being resolved, the Board of Education approves this, after the second review, the new policy eight fifteen point one, use of generative artificial intelligence in education. As per appendix number twelve. I've got a, I'd like to motion to table this, this policy or this item. Because there's a few things in it when I talked to our solicitor that we need to discuss before we adopt it. Okay, so I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna motion to table. Second one, Mr. Jerry Criminocker. All in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed to the table?
I should carry.
Item D, two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar update, be it resolved, the Board of Education approves adding two built-in snow days. Into the calendar for the upcoming school year, the traditional snow days will be used first. And if needed, we will use the five flexible day instruction days as per appendix number thirteen. I'll make that motion. Second one, Mr. Mike Basil. Any questions or comments?
Filled our obligation with Tri County.
I think if, if we work and help me out, I think this helps them out with their.
With Tri County, does that fulfill our obligation with that?
Help, and I think we could, we also need to discuss as a board, you need to discuss as a board. I think just following their contract and paying for a hundred seventy-six days. So those, just stick with the contract we got.
Um, any other comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed?
I should carries.
Item E, annual school safety report, Dr. Masonic went over with us in executive session, which she has to against by law. Alright, that's all I have, personnel.
So many contracts, be it resolved, the Board of Education approves a new contract with Dr. Laura for sign, beginning July first. Twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty-five six.
Question for Mr. Jen Zenshaw, second one by Mrs. Danielle Hoover. Any questions or comments?
Good, Jerry, I feel that we're rushing into this contract, I think we should be. Thinking about it, we'll see how stuff goes, we have till next year to do something.
Just speak up just a little bit, Jerry, I can't hear you.
Sorry, I think that we should be. Taking some time to see how. taking some time to see how our building project goes and go from there, so. Uh, we have a whole year to renew this.
Okay. Uh, I think you're first, go ahead.
Um, what portion of her evaluation, Jerry, is based on her performance with the building project? You know that? I mean, if you're gonna, I mean, that's your whole rationale, it would be good to know how much of her actual evaluation that we are by law mandated to go by. How much of her evaluation is weighted on that building?
I don't.
Pardon me?
I don't have that.
Okay.
I'd like to.
Hold on, Mr. Mike Basil's next.
Yeah, the only comment I have is, again, I would agree with that comment, but the only issue I have with it is that we, we put out a posting for superintendent, so it's, if, if we're gonna, again, be fair to Laura, if we're going to wait and see how she does with the building project, you know, some technically part of her, I guess she's all part of her role, obviously, uh, but we probably shouldn't be also advertising that to supers and to be done. Otherwise, it's kind of contradictory.
I just have to answer that, uh, I'd say at a hundred percent, it affects the building project. We have curriculum that's constantly changing, we have finances that are constantly changing, there's every area of that, that is because of this building project that is current right now, things are changing, um, and therefore our school has to adapt. That wasn't my question, my question was how much of her evaluation is based on her performance with the building project? Finances, professionalism, organizing, every, like, I see it. Like, you see it, but not, okay, how it actually is, okay?
Agree to differ.
Kevin, just.
Yeah.
One other, just again, I, I think, we just have to be very clear too, the, the building project was a board action, not a superintendent action. Uh, again, that, that was a common action that Laura took, she's a, she, we directed her to oversee the building project, so it's not like Laura voted, we need that, push this building through, a lot of people see that she's managed it through for some reason, but this was a board action, so we just need to keep that in, in, uh, clarity.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Krimenacher?
Yeah.
Mrs. Krimenacher?
No.
Mrs. Lee?
No.
Mr. Chelsea, Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Ms. Zenshaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Dr. Krug?
No.
Mrs. Krug?
No.
Motion fails.
Item B, school license professional, no, sorry. Be resolved, the Board of Education authorizes renewal of the contract with Susan L. Long, N C C, L P C, for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year at a rate of fifty dollars per hour, four days a week, at a total of fifty-four thousand, paid through P C C D grad.
Motion, Mr. Mike Basil? Second, this is Jen Zenshaw? Questions or comments? Go ahead, Mark.
Um, this is still being paid for this P C, P C D grant, along with Melissa McShronin, we have enough money for both, because it's two different grants.
It's all from that grant.
But I'm, it's got like, but we have enough money to cover her as well as.
We have a hundred and eleven thousand dollars in that grant.
Okay. I asked for the breakdown.
What's the twenty-nine thousand dollar one for?
Twenty-nine thousand dollars is for security.
Security. And what's, and what's the other one labeled as? The one hundred eleven?
Mental health.
Mental health. Would you, for next meeting, would you be able to give us the total breakdown? We know the total amount.
I have the one.
Can we have the total breakdown of what's being paid out of each one to this date?
Well, this, nothing's been paid to this date.
This starts with the upcoming school year.
I have a little, a little bit of.
Okay, well, yeah.
If that helps, because I, we're.
Well, for next time. That's all.
We don't communicate.
Okay. Anyone else? Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed?
Motion carries.
On February, be resolved, the Board of Education approves the on February. Uh, question for October thirty-one, nine, five, beginning at August night, ten, twenty-five, board through off February ten, twenty-five.
Motion, Mrs. Mark Krimenacher? Second, Mr. Jared Krimenacher? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed?
Motion carries.
Item D, school, be resolved, the Board of Education hires Martha Phillips, has a five-hour school a beginning the twenty-five fourth through twenty-five school year, starting salary as a N C E S P conference.
Motion, this is Mark Krimenacher? Second, this is Jen Zenshaw? All, I'm sorry, uh, any questions or comments?
Is this replacing someone, this is not a new position?
This is not a new position, we still have one open, we still have two open positions after this.
Okay.
All in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed?
Motion carries.
Item B, Act ninety-three contract, be resolved, the Board of Education approves the Act ninety-three agreement July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, as presented, appendix. F T I.
Motion, Jerry Krimenacher?
It's supposed to be twenty-six.
Twenty-six, twenty-six. It, it should be twenty-six, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. Plus, plus.
Uh, second, this is Norm, or Norma Froeb.
Um, and that should be twenty-six for the record, but.
Yes, do you want to reread it, Jerry? I would.
She read it, she read it.
Good enough. Okay. Uh, any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed?
Motion carries.
Any guidance counselor? Be resolved, the Board of Education agrees to authorize the P C C D grant money to pay for the costs associated with twenty-four graduate credit for Melissa McShronin to complete a guidance counselor's. The last six credits cost will be covered as per the N C A contract. Additional, the P A guidance counselor license will need to be achieved by Melissa McShronin by the start of the twenty twenty-seven through twenty twenty-eight school year. And M O U will be provided.
Do you want, do you want to read? Yes, please.
Twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-five, twelve credits, a hundred percent cost, covered by the P C C D grant money, eight thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, twelve credits, a hundred percent cost, covered by the P C C D grant money, eight thousand four hundred and sixty, twenty, twenty-six, through twenty twenty-seven, six credits and ninety percent cost covered by, uh, covered as per N C P A contract, two thousand seven hundred and eighty-six percent.
Uh, listen, Mr., my Mr. Jerry Krimenacher? Second, Mrs. Norman Krug? Questions or comments? Go ahead, Jerry.
Um, how long is the P C C D grant good for?
Two years. And so that's year one, a year two will cover twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six.
Okay, thank you.
Um, roll call.
Mrs. Krimenacher?
Yeah.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
This, Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Ms. Zenshaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Dr. Krug?
Yes.
Mrs. Krug?
Yes.
Mr. Krimenacher?
Yes.
And motion carries.
Reassignment of professional staff. Be resolved, the Board of Education through the reassignment of Ms. Melissa McShronin, become classroom teacher through high school guidance counselor beginning the twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-five school year. The position as a biology teacher will not be revealed at this time. Make that motion.
Motion, Mr. Jerry Krimenacher? Second, Mrs. Carol Lee? Questions or comments? Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed?
Motion carries.
Item H, Titan Board Cheerleaders Provost from twenty nineteen. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves the decision to discuss in executive session to provide payment for services to Britain, Franklin, and the amount of.
That's two thousand two hundred and eighty-five.
Two thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars put in a blank. I'll make the motion. Hey, motion dies for lack of a second.
Full physician, be resolved, the Board of Education approves the Office of Doctor, uh, to be here to provide school positional services and, uh, district beginning the twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-five school year. The contract is attached separately in the board, mark.
Motion, this is Mark Krimenacher, second, Mr. Jerry Krimenacher? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed?
Motion carries.
Any else, sir? Staff developer?
Item B, Title Nine Conference facilitated by eleven and beard legal groups. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves the administration and the athletic director to attend the virtual training on July ninth, twenty twenty-four hosted by the I U eight to learn best practices to adhere to and comply with the new Title Nine requirements. The cost of the training is two thousand five hundred dollars for all participants, attachment number four. I'll make the motion.
First, Mr. Chen Zenshaw? First, uh, second, my Mr. Mike Basil? Questions, your comments, I have one. Unless you guys have, okay. This, when it says for all participants, that doesn't mean each, that means everybody attending from a certain entity, right?
Correct.
Okay. Who else?
That's one price. Is that?
Twenty-five for all to go. Uh, all in favor?
Hold on.
I'm sorry to see.
It's, so are we limited to two people going to the?
No.
We can have as many from our organization go as we want. So, my plan is to have, for that one price, is to have, uh, myself, the principals, and the athletic director attend.
Would it be helpful if the athletic liaison attended so that when the board uh, shows on things, he could be, you know, helpful in?
Sure, I, I can invite him as well.
I think the problem with that is it's probably gonna change every year. That's the problem with that, okay? I, 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 maybe it should be the maintenance supervisor goes, because they might be the one that's in charge of taking care of the fields, the facilities. That's what I think should happen. That's just my opinion, but.
I'm concerned, we've made, the board has made decisions that, like the maintenance supervisor, that's great, he would understand how to do that, but the board decided where the kids would play ball. And that's what.
My only concern is if you keep sending this, the same athletic chair, it's gonna change all the time.
So, should the board attend?
I mean, I take Title Nine at work every year. Once I get the link, I can provide it to everyone.
That, that would be helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There might be some people in the stands that might go once in a while too, I think, so. All in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed?
Me, I'll pose.
Okay, one, so seven to one.
Okay. Good?
Yep.
As be as there's two. P A Summit twenty-four for educational leaders. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves the request of Mrs. Angela Givens to attend the P A Summit twenty-four for educational leaders on August fourth through the sixth, twenty twenty-four, in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. The cost of the district will be seven hundred sixty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents. Details are outlined in attachment five, and I will make the motion.
First, Mr. Jen Zenshaw? Second, Mr. Mike Basil? Questions or comments? Um, all in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed?
Motion carries.
Any options?
Nothing.
Student activities?
Nothing if it's called.
Transportation?
Oh, sorry. Nothing that doesn't.
Athletics, item A, Chathammont Golf Course. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves the agreement with Chathammont Golf Course to be used at the district's home course for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five golf season as per appendix eighteen. I'll make that motion. Say, Mr. Jerry Krimenacher? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed?
Motion carries.
Item B, head golf coach. Be resolved, the Board of Education discussed Randy Brad Blickador for a three-year contract as the head golf coach for the district as follows, two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, two thousand five hundred forty-six dollars, twenty-five, twenty-six, two thousand six hundred twenty-two dollars, and twenty-six, twenty-seven as negotiated. I'll make the motion. My second, my, this is Jen Zenshaw? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed?
Motion carries.
Uh, I didn't see head soccer coach. Be resolved, the Board of Education grants Mike Keaney a three-year contract as head soccer coach for the district as follows, two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, four thousand seventeen dollars, twenty-five, twenty-six, four thousand one hundred thirty-eight dollars, two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven as negotiated. Uh, I'll make the motion. Uh, this is Mark Krimenacher, second it. Questions or comments? Um, I have one. Um, I don't know if this has changed since I've been here, but I usually have first-year head coach gets a one-year contract and, and the remaining ones, the next ones are multiple years. Has that changed?
For one year? He coached last year.
With, with what?
Soccer.
Oh, did he, okay, I'm sorry, I thought that was Brian O'Leary. My, my, my apologies. Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed?
Motion carries.
Uh, item D, head girls' basketball coach. Be resolved, the Board of Education hires Brian Kuhn as the head girls' basketball coach for the twenty-four, twenty-five season at a salary of five thousand seven hundred dollars. Make the motion? Voice of Jerry Krimenacher? Questions or comments?
Uh, I have a question, is this a brand-new coach?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, why did we not meet this person? We usually meet the new coaches when they come on before they bring them. I didn't meet Mr. Keaney when he started last year.
It's usually handled through, uh, Lisa Prevish and Dan Page.
Okay, is this person, is the person recommend, recommended by them?
Yes.
Athletic director.
They would be, yeah, they only made the agenda if they're recommended by the athletic director and principal.
Okay, that's what I'm wondering, if it's athletic director approved and the principal, okay. That helps.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed?
Motion carries.
Uh, head cheerleading coach. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves granted Karen Basil a three-year contract as head cheerleading coach for the district as follows, twenty-four, twenty-five, two thousand five hundred forty-six dollars, twenty-five, twenty-six, two thousand six hundred twenty-two dollars, and twenty-six, twenty-seven as negotiated. I'll make the motion. So. My, my second, Mrs. Norman Krug? Questions or comments? Okay, I think we should probably do a roll call, because one might have to abstain on this one. Go ahead.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Upstate.
Ms. Zenshaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yeah.
Dr. Krug?
Yes.
Mrs. Krug?
Yes.
Mr. Krimenacher?
Yes.
Mrs. Krimenacher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item F, assistant coaches. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves hiring the following assistant coaches for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Assistant golf coach Nick Drummond, one thousand eight hundred twenty-three. Assistant soccer coach Luca Caboto, Cabo, Cobato, at three thousand seven hundred nineteen. Assistant cheerleading coach Kim and Cracken, one thousand five twenty-seven. Assistant football coach Marty Lassar, four thousand thirty-one. Assistant football coach Jeremy Gold, four thousand thirty-one. Assistant football coach Joe Wyler, four thousand thirty-one. Assistant football coach Derek Beer, four thousand thirty-one. Assistant football coach Rich Moore, four thousand thirty-one. Assistant football coach Justin Sedgall, Sedlock, at three thousand eight hundred. And I'll make that motion.
Upstate.
Second, Mrs. Norman Krug? Pleasure, your comments? Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
I do, but that won't have to make it, this is football coaches.
Summon number junior, how, I said.
Okay, and, and my question is, I'm guessing the difference is the year. Okay, and and my question is, I'm guessing the difference is the year of coach, is this Justin's first? And the others, sort of like, there's, yeah, I didn't know he still. I didn't know he was, why the price different?
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed?
Oh, she's carrying.
All right, uh, payment of the bills. Be resolved, the payment of bills for the month of June two thousand twenty-four. Be approved as presented, amended, received, and filed. I will make the motion. Second, Mr. Jerry Krimenacher. Questions, your comments? I mean, I have one. I had, I had contacted Mr. Baronis about some of these, and the only reason I wanted to bring it up is because he did clear up one thing for me. Uh, the, the one reimbursement for Mrs. McCracken would look really large, and he said there was something grouped together for that one. So that helped a lot, okay? Uh, so I do appreciate him doing that. Any other was the one I talked to about executive session, so. Um, anybody have any questions? Okay, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Okay, guys, anything you want on the calendar for the, for the thing? The one I want is the, uh, the vote, itemized vote.
Give me the appraisal.
Anybody else?
Do we renegotiate contracts and move forward with any type of, do we have an update on what's happening? With superintendent's position?
Well, I asked Mrs. Sebel today, we have no applicants outside yet, and I didn't expect any, because it is, it is a whole year away. So there's time, um, but that's all I have on my.
Um, those change orders, if there are costs or anything more to that.
Well, Nick said, if we don't vote for it tonight.
Our hands are strapped at that. It's kind of an unfairness.
Yeah, we can't write one down.
If, if he can get us cost, can we, I mean, if we, if he can get the cost, can we have a special meeting if it sounds like something that we need to?
We can do that.
I mean, I'm not saying we'll vote for it, maybe there are costs or inhibiting, but if we get the cost, maybe we can get back together to make those decisions.
If we, uh, if we get, if we get the cost, if we have enough people that want to come in and vote for it, then we'll, I'll follow me. No, not on there. Thanks, there are no other things. Be resolved, a regular meeting of the Northern County School Board for June eighteen, two thousand twenty-four, be adjourned at. Seven forty P M. I will make that motion. Second by Jerry Krimenacher. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Anyone opposed?